Long as Sam and TV is ready.
They haven't gotten the go-ahead that they are ready.
Oh.
But we're on TV, so I'm guessing we're ready.
I think that is a yes.
Okay. Calling to order the Monday, September 20th, 2021 Regular Meeting of the 38th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard.
Here.
Mayor Protam Dean.
Here.
Councilmember Gavin.
Here.
Councilmember Henin.
Here.
Councilmember Price.
Here.
Mayor Turbrack.
Here.
Our first order of business this evening is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Your Honor, if I may?
Certainly.
I'd like to make a motion to approve with one alteration. I'd like to recommend that we remove item number eight from the agenda and move the subsequent items up to fill that spot.
All right, is there a second?
Support.
Okay, we have motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Gavin. Mr. Attorney, with that friendly amendment, do we have to vote on the amendment first, or can we vote?
I think you can just go ahead and vote.
Any communication or conversation, I should say, regarding the change that was proposed? Seeing none, thank you. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on tonight's agenda as amended?
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henin.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes. At this time, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. With us this evening is Pastor Adam Groh.
Good evening, let's pray. God, we thank you for this evening, the chance to gather, do the city's work, and I thank you for these city servants and the sacrifice that they make and the sacrifices that their families make that we could have a city as great as Berkeley. And so, God, we are thankful for this place we live, and we're thankful for the sense of normalcy that we are beginning to see around town, art fair and football games. But, God, we know that there's still a lot of division, so we pray for selflessness and understanding civility amongst our community that see things very differently, and amongst our families, we pray for kindness. We pray that we would, as the Bible says, be quick to listen and slow to speak, and that's something that we can, we should be doing in a time like this. But we ask your blessing over schools back in session, over the teachers and students and administrators. We just pray their protection over them, and give us, ask your blessing on this evening and this meeting tonight, Jesus' name, amen.
Sorry, just waiting to see if the flag appears for everybody else virtually. If not, okay. And, it's, there we go.
At Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will now move to our public comments section. As has happened the last couple of meetings, this will proceed a little bit differently in our hybrid environment, so please wait until I finish speaking to come up to the microphone. Per our normal rules and procedures, these are for public comments that are not included on tonight's agenda. You will have the opportunity to speak on a specific agenda item while it is being considered. Please remember that councilmembers will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or Department of the City and you're here, please sign in at the clerk's table. For those that are attending in person, when I open it, you can simply step up to the podium, state your name and city of residence prior to making your comments. For those attending virtually, participants in the webcast can utilize the raise hand function by selecting Manage Participants on the bottom of your dashboard, then select the More button in the bottom right-hand corner. Our moderator, Mr. Hill, today will call your name aloud and unmute you so that you can speak when it is your turn. For those that have called in, you will be placed in the queue for public comment by selecting star nine as well. Our moderator will announce the last four digits of your phone number for recognition and then unmute you so that you can speak. Again, you will have three minutes to speak, and once your three minutes are up, you will be muted by our moderators. Additionally, we will read comments that were emailed to the clerk, to the clerk@berkeleymiss.net prior to 5:00 PM. Given the circumstances in the virtual space, we will summarize the correspondences and make sure that we acknowledge them on the public record or in the public record. At this time, I will open the public comments first for those that are in person, then I'll ask if there are any email correspondence, and finally, we will move to our folks attending with us virtually. So if you are here in person, come on up. Sue and Jeff. Thanks, Jeff. I didn't want Sue to be late.
Hello, I'm Sue Richardson, and I'm Chair of the Berkeley Historical Committee, and I'm very excited to announce the first issue of our brand-new newsletter. It's called "The Museum Corner," and we're planning to have this as a quarterly publication. I want to give a shout-out to Don Callahan, who is a volunteer for our committee. Since he is not a Berkeley resident, he is not eligible to be an official member of the committee, but he's been wonderful. He has his roots in Berkeley, lives now in Royal Oak, and he wandered into the museum one day and offered his services to produce a newsletter, and we couldn't be happier with the results. I also want to give a shout-out to Tori Mathis, who was very, very helpful in this process, gave us some great advice, so we really appreciate her. Right now, copies of this are available at the city clerk's office, at the library, and of course, at the museum. We're planning for the future to go mostly with digital versions, but we hope you'll enjoy reading this, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sue. This is, this is very exciting. Looking forward to reading all of that's in here in the quarterly publications as they come out.
Hi, Liz Petrie, Berkeley resident. I'm here to announce Berkeley Cares Food Pantry is launching. Yay! Thirteen percent of Michigan's population lives in food insecurity. It's almost 1.3 million people. Thirty-five percent are above the threshold for assistance. In Oakland County, almost 10% of the county is in food insecurity. Forty-nine percent are above the federal guidelines to get help. And it's food security just doesn't affect kids, it also affects everyone, even our seniors. For a senior, 10% of our senior citizens in the state of Michigan live below poverty level. Berkeley Cares Food Pantry was created to help fill the void. We are a nonprofit renting space at Berkeley First Church. Our first PACT the Pantry event is October 2nd from 10:00 AM to noon, and I encourage you all, stop by, say hello, bring donations. We have a email address, which is berkeleycaresfoodpantry@gmail.com. If you would like the link on, to make a monetary donation, it's through PayPal. Or you can mail the check to us at P.O. Box 5012, Berkeley, 48072. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Liz. I know that's something you've been working on for quite some time.
My name's Gabrielle Sweetie, I live in Berkeley. Mayor Turbrack, city council members and members of staff, you might recall that I live at 1047 Eaton Road, which is directly across from the demolished lot and zone parking site at 1046 Eaton. I'm here tonight, speaking for myself, my family, and my neighbors on Eaton, Stanford, and Oxford. We're very concerned about the lack of enforcement of Berkeley ordinances, the February 2020 consent judgment, and the restated and amended collaboration agreement between the city, Vincetta, and Lugo. We are extremely disappointed and frustrated that the plans in the consent judgment and the collaboration agreement have not moved forward as described in those documents. On January 6, 2020, the residents, the council, and the mayor were all assured in this room by our legal counsel that consenting to this judgment would protect us from the repeated and ongoing bad faith actions by Vincetta. During that call, Councilmember Steve Baker asked, "To the notion of timing of when the ball gets started, in terms of submitting any plans to get the process started, do we have any?" And Mr. Sarin interjected, "They have to submit plans to get this going. If they don't submit plans, they don't get anything." Mr. Baker then asked, "Is it not in our favor to put a timeline on that, to say within three months, or six months, or two months, or a week?" And Mr. Sarin responded, "That would have to be negotiated, that is beyond what we've talked about. Typically, the city doesn't control when people decide, if ever, to do private development, simply. When they start, this is the sequence of things that have to happen, okay? If they never start, then it's the status quo. They don't get to use the property, they don't get the additional parking. The four lots on Oxford and the three lots on Eaton stay just as they are now. And as we stand today, that is not what has occurred. Property lines were redrawn, the alley behind T-Mobile was vacated, six demolition permits were issued by the city, and six homes were demolished, all before planning plans were submitted. So am I wrong here? What we would like is accountability. Since the very first rezoning meeting for 1036 and 1046 Eaton, if anyone can remember that far back, we have agreed that parking is needed and simply asked that the rezoning be conditional on approved site plans, given the history of issues with 1010 and all of the other incidents. Conditional rezoning, or the decision to rezone at all, is leverage. Pending litigation is leverage. Authority to grant demolition permits is leverage, and approval of site plans is leverage. And the city is just continually giving up leverage in this matter. And by all appearances, Vincetta is continuing to try to wait us all out by making the status quo unbearable, exactly as we stood here over five years ago and predicted that they would do. So I'm here tonight with a petition signed by 40 neighbors, asking for the city's help in holding Vincetta accountable and helping us all to move forward from this decade-long impasse. Yes, it's actually a decade, I checked. So what are we asking for? We are asking for a meeting for discussion and input on site plans for Eaton and Oxford in advance of any planning commission or city council meetings. Hopefully, that will help it go more smoothly. We are asking, again, that clear and enforceable timelines be established and then enforced. And we request that Vincetta be held accountable for their actions and for the fulfillment of their written and verbal agreements. Mayor Turbrack, on January 6, 2020, you said, "We can do this practically apart, setback with trees, with other green features, block not only the lights turning around, but also to preserve the character next to those new houses that are going to be built." And I do think that is a practical resolution to this matter, and that led to the vote. So we're asking that you, as city council, and the city staff, push for that resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabrielle. Do you, on the petition, do you have everything listed that you would like on there, just so?
Yes, the requests are listed on the petition.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you, Gabrielle. All right, before we switch to the folks for public comments that are visiting with us virtually, I do want to mention our representatives from the museum did have to go, but you will each be leaving here tonight with a special gift. There is a museum corner at the clerk's table, please feel free to take one on your way out as a thank you for being with us in person today. Mr. Hill, is there anybody that would like to comment virtually, please?
It appears Liz Trombley from Senator McMorro's office is in the waiting room.
She's going to be next on the agenda.
Then we do not have any further comment.
Not? Okay, I do apologize, I skipped a spot, Ms. Mitchell, I skipped a step, sorry. Was there any comments that came in for you to read?
Yes, Your Honor. Paul Jordan sent in an email. First, he does not support tax abatements, breaks for 2219 Coolidge LLC. Secondly, he asked if we went through rebranding a few years ago. And lastly, he expressed concern over the contents of the subsection "Research" under the heading "Branding Outcomes" in regards to agenda item number three, more specifically mentions of logos.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else, Ms. Mitchell, that you had?
No.
No. Okay, with that, I believe I've now hit everything that needs to be hit. We will close our public comments section, and we will move into our order of business this evening. First is our consent agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
One, approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the 38th regular city council meeting on Monday, August 9, 2021. Two, warrant, matter of approving warrant number 1366. Three, proclamation number P 2421, matter proclaiming September 2021 as National Suicide Prevention Month. Four, proclamation number P 2521, matter proclaiming September 2021 as National Recovery Month. Five, proclamation number P 2621, matter proclaiming September 2021 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Six, proclamation number P 2721, matter proclaiming September 2021 as National Preparedness Month. Seven, proclamation number P 2821, matter proclaiming September 15 through October 15, 2021, as Hispanic Heritage Month. Eight, proclamation number P 2921, matter of proclaiming October 2021 as Berkeley Area Chamber of Commerce Month.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda? Go move.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Blanchard with support from Mayor Protam Dean. Are there any corrections or additions? Seeing none. Oh, Mr. Hill, are there any virtual comments? Caught myself there.
It appears that we do have a hand raise.
Okay.
It appears that the hand raise has left the meeting.
Well, we will take that as a show of ambiguity, and we will move to call for a roll, please, Ms. Mitchell.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Consent agenda has passed, we now move on to tonight's regular agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number one?
Recognizations, presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing no recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda, we move on to item number two, please.
Two, presentation, matter of receiving a presentation from Senator Mallory McMorro's office.
And as we heard earlier, Liz Trombley is with us this evening from Senator McMorro's office.
Hello, yes, I'm here.
There you are, hi Liz.
Hi, so I have a really, just a brief update today. We just got back in session a couple weeks ago, and so it's budget season, but with that, we will likely have a final budget either tomorrow or Wednesday. There's been reports saying there's an agreement between the majority party and the governor. However, we haven't seen the final product yet, so we'll probably see that tomorrow and then vote on it by Wednesday. Outside of that, from our office, Sarah McMorro, with a few House colleagues and Senate colleagues, is working on introducing a package focusing on maternity and family leave policies. So that's the update for us.
Well, thank you, Liz, I appreciate you consistently checking in with us. Does anybody have any quick questions or comments that they would like Liz to take back to the senator? Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. First, I'd like to thank you and our senator for all the terrific work that you all do on behalf of Berkeley and our region, and I was wondering if there's anything in the budget that you'd be interested in highlighting for us. You know, all too often, these kinds of procedural things just move forward, but as we know, the budget's a reflection of our priorities and our values, and I was wondering if there's anything in particular in the budget that you and the senator would like to highlight so that we could be sure to look out for in the months and years ahead as the budget process moves forward? Anything that you'd be interested in sharing with us tonight?
Well, unfortunately, the budget hasn't been passed out of like the conference committees yet, so I don't even know what the like individual line items are. If you worked on appropriations, I may be able to say that, but unfortunately, I don't have a specific item because I don't know what the final vote or presentation they're going to be providing us is exactly.
Excellent, I guess, I guess your time with us here tonight was just a little bit too early to get into any of the details.
Yeah.
I certainly understand, I certainly understand that the senator is busy involved more intricately in some of the other committees and processes that are underway, so, so thank you, and we are eager to hear what's happening and the positive benefits that that may bring to our city and our region. Thank you.
Yeah.
And while we're on the topic of budgets, Liz, if we could kindly pass along our sincere support for continuing or increasing the regional infrastructure allocations, as us and many of our neighbors in the region are trying to find solutions that are solutions that we cannot fix on our own, and we need leadership from the state, from the senator, and also to lead regional conversations so that we can take care of our residents, so that every time it rains, we don't have people running around lifting things up and going up to the second floor of their home.
Yep, yes, I will do that.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, well, thank you for being with us, Liz. We look forward to seeing you again in the future, and I'm sure we will be in communication with the senator's office once we hear a little bit more on what that budget looks like.
Yeah, I might, if we had this meeting tomorrow, I might know a little bit more right now, not a whole lot, bunch on it.
Sorry, one is enough for this week. No, I'm just, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Liz. We will now move on to item number three, please, Ms. Mitchell.
Motion number M 5021, matter of authorizing the city manager to enter into professional services agreement with Head Route LLC of Frendale, Michigan, to perform branding and website development services, not to exceed $25,000 for year one, and $4,340 annually for maintenance for subsequent years. This expenditure will be charged to account number 101-750-814-000.
Is there a motion to approve M 5021?
So moved.
Support, I guess, but you got it all covered.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Price with support from Mayor Protam Dean. I could have called a number of folks. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, everyone. This item comes to you by way of our regular course of procurement. It's been through a bidding process, both Tori Mathis, our communicate, our community outreach officer, as well as our chief innovation officer, Stan Lisca, both reviewed the bids. They both joined us this evening to make a presentation on this item. But a little bit of background here, it has been five or six years now since the last time the city went through a process like this. Our city's website is, remains largely unchanged since that time, with only some text updates throughout. So it's become stale, it doesn't represent the best that municipal websites have to offer at this point. As you probably can imagine, the technology involved in these items moves quickly, and so five or six years now is not what it used to be from a technology standpoint. So, one of the big projects that we had tasked Ms. Mathis with when she first came on was getting us to this point and making some updates to download the city's website, its front face to the world, but also to come up with a consistent set of branding materials, voice, tents, color scheme, all those items, so that we can be, so that you can look at almost anything the city does and say, "That's a Berkeley item." And so, we're happy to see her get to this point, it's been a long road, and certainly she can fill in the more pertinent details for you this evening.
Ms. Mathis, welcome.
Hi, yes, can you guys hear me okay?
We can hear you. You are definitely frozen with a nice smile on your face, but we can hear you.
Okay, great. I do thank you guys for having me join in virtually. I'm actually at a government technology conference with Stan as we speak, so more updates, learning about websites, as well as other infrastructural things, so I'm super excited to be here, but also to talk about this project, because, because as Matt has shared, this has been one of the tasks that I've been given as I had started, and unfortunately, we had a big glaring COVID pandemic on us, so we had to put this on pause. But really, what I kind of wanted to share outside of what Matt has already shared is that this is a big thing, you know, Berkeley is going through a huge transition, as we've seen with the master plan and what's come out of that from the community, and this kind of was the perfect timing to roll out this project and really solidify everything that has been stated within the community in terms of their message, or the community's message, their value statements, and really kind of codifying that within a huge, amazing resource and tool that will be our website. So, any questions that you guys do have, please ask, I'm happy to answer what I can.
Councilmember Price?
Thank you. Ms. Mathis, thank you so much for the work that you and Director Lisca have done on this. I think your notes and information are very thorough. I would love for you to share a bit about what the, the, the recommended recipient of the proposal offers to the community compared to revise the company that we're familiar with. What are the differences between what's being offered by the new company compared to what we're used to?
Sure, I, there's a couple different things. As far as what really kind of- Solidified my decision, or our decision in going with them, is their community branding initiative. You know, a lot of people, when I was going through this assessment, whether it was speaking to residents, whether it was talking to our staff, you guys, there was a lot of limitations that were provided, or we were dealing with in terms of the actual website that we were working with. But not only that, from my perspective and where I'm coming from, there wasn't a comprehensive understanding of, you know, who Berkeley was and what Berkeley is and where you're going. So for me, as a communicator, that is difficult. You know, it's, it's hard to explain, you know, what is Berkeley? You know, there's so many great things that define Berkeley, but there wasn't anything that was codified to provide that. So, the goal and my objective with this is to kind of create a cohesive and consistent brand that signifies and dignifies what Berkeley is and where we're going, and then, as well as have the website be a tool or a resource hub that can be referenced when it comes to talking about Berkeley. You know, we have a great story here, and I want to showcase that in the best light possible, and then also give our staff, but also you as council and our community, the ability to do that as well. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. I do have one follow-up question, I was hoping you would highlight, but the accessibility offered by this new website, could you just expand on that a little bit, what residents might be able to see in terms of accessibility?
Absolutely, so from an accessibility standpoint, while yes, traditional media is still a key factor within communications, we are seeing, you know, especially with the pandemic, there was a growth in terms of digital access. So, where assessy, assessy B, or at least the tool that Head Route will be utilizing, it's an ADA compliance tool that is added onto our website, so it will better assist myself, as well as other interested staff members who are editing and managing their own content, to monitor and make sure that they are being ADA compliant. So when we add an image, or if we change our text, they, they vet that, because it's basically reading our site as we make changes or modify things. But in addition to that, it offers you as an end user, it, let's say, you need a screen reader, you can screen, it'll screen read for you, or at least have the website set up to be optimized to screen read for you, or if you have, you know, sensitive eyesight and you need to adjust your contrast or anything like that, you can adjust those tools and settings yourself as an end user, and it'll, those are just a couple examples, but that's what the ADA or assessy B will provide on the website.
Fantastic, thank you.
Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor, and to follow up on my colleague's questions, first again, thank you for, for your great work with us. I certainly understand the long journey that this has been under here and all the appropriate reasons and rationale for, for this coming before us tonight. A technology question and a process question. A technology question and a process question. And I think you've partially already answered the technology portion with your accessibility comments, which were fantastic. Is there any intent to have a standalone mobile app that interfaces with the website? Or will the fact that the website is presumably going to be mobile-friendly, do we feel that that's sufficient to provide access to anybody, you know, regardless of what device that they're using? Typically, you know, obviously, we think of websites, we think of, you know, browsers and PCs and things like that. Just was curious if there was part of the plan that you could highlight for us from a mobile perspective?
Sure. So, as you see in trending statements, most sites are already mobile responsive. So there really is no need for a separate application tool because we will be building the site to be mobile responsive. You know, obviously, there are a plethora of different devices and such. So we will accommodate to probably the most pertinently used and then kind of backtrack from there based off what the vendor recommends because obviously, they're going to be a bit more technically inclined and an expert in that regard. But yeah, there's really no need for a separate application because the site will be equipped to handle mobile devices.
Cool. Thank you. And then from a process perspective, you hinted at this earlier with the notion of the content creators and content curators. And this might be, again, a bit ahead of the game here. To what extent are we imagining our various boards and committees having the opportunity to provide content on their own? Or perhaps it's moderated? They submit draft materials that you and the team on the inside just give a proofread to and moderate? Is there any conversation about broadening the ability to provide fresh, real-time content into the website, to our boards and committees?
Sure. I'm sure Stan will jump in with this a little bit, too. But from a security perspective, it'll probably more so just be maintained internally. I will be overseeing most of that. And then obviously, we'll have a couple internal administrators or editors per the departments. But as far as any outside entities, we will probably recommend to have them go through what the current process is, which is going through me, and then we can always update in real time. It seems to be a process that has been working well, especially now that we're back in person. I'm able to establish more of those relationships and work with those different boards and entities. But there, as far as having access and having presence on our website, that will still remain.
Excellent. Yeah, thank you. I was just merely asking. I certainly appreciate from a security and content verification perspective, I would not want anything to go on the website that somebody, you and the team, have had a chance to review and approve. I just thought there may be an opportunities to streamline the process to provide folks on our various committees that have thoughtful content to share, to be able to pre-stage that in an offline environment, you know, somewhere off to the side that you and the team can take a look at, then you make your appropriate tweaks and push the button, that kind of a thing. Of course, I would never want folks to just have carte blanche ability to post anything. So maybe that's something to think about. You know, like you said, the old website was the old website. And now that we have greatly expanded in new technologies that offer tremendous new capabilities to our residents, I think, you know, empowering our committees to be able to give content updates in a timely manner that minimize your burden, right? You know, it's a win-win here, right? If the committees are doing their thing and you have the ability to take a look at it, say yes, yes, no, yes, no, that kind of cool stuff, I think everybody wins. So I appreciate your potential consideration for that as a process improvement, you know, as we turn the corner and approach a new digital presence. So thank you.
Yeah, of course.
As we move forward, I do want to let everybody watching at home with us know that we are having some technical difficulties, so I do apologize. We can hear you guys absolutely clear. You may be less happy when you see the pictures of you that have been on the screen, frozen for the last few minutes. Every once in a while, they change just a little bit, but we are working to get that back up. But we can still hear everybody, and that is ultimately what matters here. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Your Honor. So Tori and Stan, if we think of the brand as the visual aesthetic that we tie to who we say we are, having just completed the master plan, I can't think of a better time to take on this project, not that it hasn't been needed for a while. I want to applaud your efforts. I think the package from, oh, I can't. I say Head Route. I always end up like saying it wrong. I think their package was comprehensive. I like the robust engagement with stakeholders and community members. I think that's all very important because we all know if everyone has involvement and feels like they're part of something, then together we move forward in a positive way. Thank you, Councilmember Baker, for mentioning about the app because I did get a question about that from a resident, actually Paul Jordan. So I'm glad that that came up. And I really, I mean, I am probably the least techie person at this table, but I do like that backend editor. I know there's a fancier term for it, but I use it at my store on the website. I can go in and type in the text and move around pictures, and it just makes things happen in real time a lot quicker than if I had to go, you know, to my web person to do that. So I love that the departments will have that ability to update and have things be as current as possible. So thank you both very much for your, you know, doing your due diligence and looking at all of these bids. And I think we definitely have the right one in front of us. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hennan.
Yeah. Yeah, I've carefully reviewed this. I'm very happy with what I've seen. I sent in some, you know, highly technical requests since this overlaps with my profession. Wouldn't be appropriate to go over those in detail here, but. One comment and then a couple of questions. Just on the, I want to caution on the sensitive nature of the branding. I know, Tori, you and I have discussed this, but we have the existing logo that is going to remain, isn't going to be changed. And, but people are going to be concerned that that's the direction this is going. So I know we have a lot of outreach in this, so we just, you know, need to be careful and respectful within that regard. The questions, just the first, when do we expect the new site to be ready?
Sure. So we are anticipating that the proposed timeline for the official launch for the site specifically will happen by the next fiscal year or end of this fiscal year, so July 1st is pretty much what we're anticipating. And to backtrack on why that is like that is because we want to focus on branding first. And Dennis, I'm very happy that you brought that up because, yes, we are not changing the city's seal. I want to make that publicly known, that we're not changing that. Really, what we want to do is, as I know that it represents a lot for this community and that history needs to be, I think, publicly known as well as a part of our messaging and our narrative and who we define ourselves. Not only from an administrative and a council perspective, but, you know, for perspective, you know, residents or community members or businesses, it's very important that we do that. And like with the master plan, a lot of takeaways that we took from that was that, you know, the master plan is a roadmap to our unknown future. What I would like to say or add to that specifically when it comes to this component is that the brand is what will hold us accountable. Our messaging is what holds us accountable, that we actually speak into, we walk the walk and talk the talk. So to say all that in the short sense is that the proposed timeline is that we focus on brand within this first, or end of this quarter, as well as early into the next quarter with a beta phase out, so kind of like a pre-launch to see how well the brand is received and understanding the focus groups and the feedback that we receive.
I think we lost you just at the end there, or you went underwater, one of those two things. Happen. Can you hear us, Tori?
I'm sorry. I can hear you. Let me turn off my video. See if that helps.
It may help you. Can you just, Tori, I think we lost probably about the last 10 seconds or so. I know you probably don't remember exactly what you said, but just to wrap up that point.
So just to wrap, we're involved with this, so it's a fixed approach. The website itself or the website is a definite kind of further proposed. There's always a place, the proposed timeline is about a year or less than now, that there's going to be a lot of engagement, the brand, beta testing with the website as well as beta testing with the brand itself.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Tori, again, we did lose a little bit there. But the word branding, obviously, as you referenced, is something that is important to our community and I think carries a couple of different connotations. What we're talking about here is not the actual physical brand seal logo. It's more about knowing who we are and making sure we're communicating that to everybody that interacts with our website, okay? So it's who we want to be and how we view ourselves. Is that fair assessment of branding as it relates to this project right now?
That's correct. Yes, that's correct. There's a misconception, so there is an educational component to this that will come into play, but the brand is more than just the seal. I want to highlight what the seal means.
Thank you. Councilmember Hennan, do you have anything else?
That's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Blanchard.
I'd just like to thank the council for asking all my questions.
Tori, could you give us a little bit on the specs of this website, please? How much torque? No, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. In all reality, this obviously has been something that we've been talking about for a number of years. And as technology changes very quickly in our lives right now, we need to continue to be responsive. And the website that we currently have served us very well initially, and it met our goals at the time, but those goals have changed, and the way that we communicate and interact with our residents has also changed. And we need to be able to adapt to that, make sure that we have something that is not only interactive for residents, but also a very easy content management system for folks to be able to pump out the right information, make sure that information is getting into the hands of those residents and that they can interact back and forth with us in the future. It is a lengthy timeline. If you look at it that way, we're talking about 2022. But there is a proposed timeline that outlines why and how we're going to get there because there is so much involvement. You don't just, you know, build a website and this company just magically puts up a website for us. There's a lot that goes into what we want it to look like, feel, certainly our brand, who are we, what is important to us, and what do we want to highlight moving forward? Anybody, any other questions? Anything else that we've missed here? All right. With that, then, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M 5021? And before you do, thank you, Ms. Mathis and Mr. Liska for being with us this evening. At least, we could hear you, and we certainly appreciate that because they're an incredibly important item and not having your presence.
Mr. Mayor, why is it when she said she was going to turn her video off, Stan went away?
She turned off Stan's video, apparently. That's okay. All right. Ms. Mitchell, let's call the roll on M 5021.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hennan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number four on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R 2921, matter of approving an application for transfer of an on-premise Class C liquor license for the Wedding Shop Inc., 2186 Coolidge Highway, Berkeley, Michigan.
Is there a motion to approve R 2921?
Motion to approve.
For.
Motion approved by Mayor Pro Tem Dean, support from Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Wedding Shop is working to make buying a dress even better. They have submitted the proper documentation required to have champagne, wine, and spirits offered to a bride and her friends and whomever is along for that journey as they seek to purchase probably one of the most important things they'll ever buy in their entire life. So it's been reviewed by all the appropriate departments. It's been signed off by Public Safety, as well as reviewed by the Clerk's Office and my office as well, with no conflicts. And we recommend approval for this item.
And Mr. Seren, could you just give us a very brief, I know we spoke about this the other day, why we're even doing this?
Well, this is a transfer-in. All of the city's quota licenses for Class C on-premise consumption have been spoken for, for some time. So in order to pursue this activity, they do need a liquor license. And the only way to get one is they have to go out and acquire one, purchase one, from elsewhere in the county and bring it into the city. And in order to do that, they require your approval as well as the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. So this is their important and necessary stop on their way for final approval to the MLCC.
Thank you. I appreciate the, just additional insight so that folks know how we got to this point and what we are talking about today. And as the city manager mentioned, it is not going to be, you know, a bar, a place where you just go after this meeting and hang out and have a few. It is intended. Unfortunately, in my recent experience, I've watched far more say yes to the dress than I ever intended. And I blame that on my wife and my daughters, but it is something that happens, and certainly, they have champagne quite frequently. So I hope everybody says yes to the dress and ask some bubbly if this approves. Questions for our attorney or for our manager? Councilmember Blanchard.
I just have a comment, Your Honor, for the city manager and maybe the attorney. I have no problem with this at all. What I have a problem with is the amount of detail that was attached to this. Is all that financial detail required as part of the application? Or if not, it should not be in our packet. It should be redacted or it should be gone. We should not see that because there's absolutely no need for it. I'd just like to make that clear, that I am very against what we see here. It's unnecessary.
Mr. Attorney, is that because that is the packet that they have to provide elsewhere, and that's what they provide us to us?
Yeah, I mean, our application, and we have an application form that's been in place for some time, and it somewhat mimics or parrots what the state requires. The state does require all that information because an important part of the vetting process for who does and doesn't get a license is the, you know, the financial wherewithal. These are very precious and limited. So there is a need at the state and really at the local level to make sure that the people that we're dealing with are capable to carry through with their plans. So although it's not necessarily, necessary, to include it in our public packet, this is all required information.
That's why we got it, because that was their packet. But I do agree, Councilmember Blanchard, that's far more information.
For the future, we can look at, you know, whether that needs to be kept in or can be redacted or can be, you know, made available to council on request, but not just to, you know, to put it out there for the world.
Excellent. Thank you. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R 2921?
Hennan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Would you please read item number five on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M 5121, matter of approving a downtown development authority event, Buckley Monster Mash on Dorothea between Coolidge Highway and the alley on Saturday, October 30th, 2021, from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Approval is conditional upon the submission of required items and documents prior to event dates.
Is there a motion to approve M 5121?
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Support.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Baker with support from Mayor Pro Tem Dean. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is hopefully a new mainstay throughout the community, but the DDA is sponsoring Buckley Monster Mash, a month-long celebration of all things Halloween in the city of Berkeley. Part of their festivities would include closing Dorothea between Coolidge and the parking spaces that abut the school's practice facilities. So for that reason, this comes before the council to authorize that closure, as any other road closure would. And so the city council is not being asked to approve the entirety of the event itself, which would happen. But this is the approval to close that section of Dorothea only. So that is why this appears before council this evening. Our interim DDA director and his pumpkins are available this evening to answer any questions.
Are there any additional questions from council? Councilmember Blanchard.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just looked at the layout and I see that the DJ and two of the temps are in the alley. I just want to make sure that we are not blocking emergency emergency vehicle access down that alley during this event. We should be able to get emergency vehicles through there without having to move some tents. So I want to make sure that they're far enough to one side or toward this beginning of where Dorothea is, that we can accomplish emergency operations.
Yes, sir. We will make sure that.
We can definitely make sure that happens. Mr. McGinnis, yes? Good. Perfect. Thank you.
And the other point is volunteers should be stationed at closure locations to maintain barricade placement, especially during setup at the end of the event. I would like to add one word to that, and that is train the volunteers. And I say that because you probably remember the story when we had the event there before, the young ladies that were sent out to put the barricades up decided that the orange looked better than the white, so they put the orange to the inside. So, you know, but when I went out there, I said, I didn't think that's supposed to warn the cars coming down the street, so we had to turn all the barricades around. So they should at least be trained as to what side goes out toward traffic.
I think that is a very salient point, and I'm comfortable adding the word trained today.
Thank you.
Councilmember Henan?
Yeah, continuing on with the DJ, I know the application says electric is not required, but I think electrical may be required for that, and then there'll be the necessary electrical permit if that's actually the case.
So I would assume if there is electric, we will certainly have to.
Yeah, so permit inspection. Right. Then, just the one other comment, just a COVID-related one, mentions that face painting may be part of this, and with COVID right now, I would discourage face painting as an activity. But that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm certainly excited about this as part of the broader Buckley events throughout this upcoming month of October here. And I'd like to invite our DDA director to come up. Not only is he dressed to the nines tonight, but I'm sure you may be able to use this opportunity to put a little promotion in for what residents can expect. What they've heard so far is a lot of, you know, important thoughtful conversations about safety and regulations and paperwork. How will it feel? What will people experience?
Magical.
Oh.
Thank you to the honorable body for the opportunity to elaborate. So the thrust is Buckley nights, so the entire month of October 2021 has a real nice staccato of features and activities, and this is really the crescendo, the finale for it. It is intentionally the day before Halloween proper, so it's on Saturday, October 30th. And from, I'll give you the whole month, but specifically for this event, okay, I'll give you the full month first. So October 1st through 29th, there is a downtown scavenger hunt that can be done through the comfort of your smartphone. We have that first weekend in partnership with the Berkeley Area Chamber of Commerce, having Berkeley Area Chamber of Commerce Month to them. That is restaurant weekend for Berkeley area. And so October 1st and 2nd is restaurant weekend in our community, and we will have a night market on that Saturday evening where we have retailers staying open later. There'll be light installations in some of the storefronts. You've already seen the beginnings of some of the downtown storefronts, their windows transformed for this fall and Halloween season. October 7th is the first of monster movie nights at Berkeley First on 12 Mile. So every Thursday night for the, oh, boy, for the entire month is a free double feature, one more children-oriented, followed up by more vintage classic horror film happening at Berkeley First. So that's every Thursday, 6:30 p.m., free and open to the community. October 14th is Ladies Night Out, so from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m., that traditional staple with a very Buckley twist. We have also trick-or-treat stroll. So this is sort of the day in question. So October 30th, that's Saturday before, the day before Halloween, businesses that are participating are handing out candy. So it's like a preemptive bite at the apple for, if they're feeling frisky, for the downtown businesses. But those participating businesses are a stop for trick-or-treaters throughout our downtown district. That's from 12 to 3:00. And then this is sort of the after-party, if you will, 2 to 6:00. So very family-friendly, but also very outdoors intentionally, so that way it can be socially distanced and sort of the Mother Nature's circulation. But it's very much a first year, so it'll definitely be experimental. So we are very adaptive and open and amenable to shifting some of the features, so that way it's better for flow, better for distancing. And we intentionally chose a spot that is a manageable footprint, so that way we weren't putting a burden on our volunteers or participants or pandemic permutations on having a really large footprint, although that could be the direction we go in future years. I really want to celebrate our two Berkeley residents who are volunteers with the Downtown Development Authority, Erin Brick and Lisa Kempner, who are some of the, especially for this Monster Mash, are the driving forces. But this is really a volunteer-led effort for the Downtown Development Authority to encourage and stimulate our residents and nearby neighbors to explore our downtown, to shop in our downtown, and to dine in our downtown. And this is a nice climax to do that, so it'll be very family-friendly with featuring crafts, activities, photo opportunities, an opportunity for the community to come together and celebrate all month long, but especially at this Monster Mash. So we will be, wanted to bring it to you because if it was a no-go, then we're not going to really go down and distill and hone, fine-tune the details and look for an alternative site. So if you are amenable to this, then we will take it to the next level of making it as tight and right as possible for Buckley 2021. Thank you.
Councilmember Price?
Yes, thank you. And thank you to all of your work and the DDA, the chamber, and the volunteers for putting this before us. This is very exciting. I love the idea of the location. I think Dorothea is an excellent location for an event like this, and to see how Dorothea can act as a community gathering space is exciting for me. I am curious about your plans for communicating the road closure and the activities to the neighboring businesses and residents. Do you have any plans in mind for that?
Absolutely. We've had a lot of success in these early weeks of getting, buying, and engagement with businesses about these various elements and components. And so I've been able to speak to a number of the businesses that are most in that periphery to get them to sign up to be a part of the trick-or-treating, to be a part of that window decor. And so this allows, you know, all the more an intentionality to knock on the door or call and send an email to say, want to let you know, but I didn't want to go that route if it was no dice for good times on Dorothea. So if that's the pleasure and the ability, then we can have that conversation because we want them to benefit as much as possible. This is for the community, this is for our downtown district as well. So we want them to get the maximum benefit and exposure. So all of these elements are intentionally staged, so that way it brings in residents that might have not explored these newer businesses or these staples. We want them to know about the latest features. We want them to explore their windows, their the nooks, the crannies, the murals. We want that exposure and that interaction. And so we want those businesses that are nearby to really roll out the orange carpet, and they can benefit as well for that Monster Mash fund, but every part of this month. And as we go through in future years with, to the point that this be an annual staple for the community, that we could continue to allow it to grow and really become something that takes our downtown merchants, really that shot in the arm, to add to the really robust schedule that the Berkeley community has been doing for years, to come together and celebrate and shop and explore and have fun.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you. So I'm going back some weeks, but I was at Fresh Collective, and Erin Brick was telling me all about these plans, you know, for Buckley. And she and Lisa were bouncing ideas back and forth, and I remember just standing there, listening to her and thinking, oh, I hope this happens, because they just, it sounded so fun. So I'm glad that the DDA and chamber have, like, jumped on this bandwagon, and you've really kind of put it into a framework. I'm delighted. As a downtown business owner, I'm participating in a lot of the things that are offered. The most delightful thing was when I came to work on Friday, and I walked up to my store, and the artist was out there painting the most adorable little spiders and webs on the window. And I was like, oh, my gosh, this is awesome. And now when I look around, I'm looking for these things in other businesses, the pumpkins, the spiders. So it's really, you have activated the downtown, and you're engaging, you know, residents as well and even visitors to Berkeley, because there's something to look at, there's something to see. There are way more things to do, certainly in that month of October. So you are all to be commended, and thank you for your energy and direction for this event, and I really look forward to the entire month. Not to wish my life away, but October's going to be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you for that, and this really is a very ripe and potent opportunity for the community, and you're well poised to capitalize on it. So we're coming at it from the downtown perspective, but the appetite is already there with your residents, the desire and the excitement that comes with the Halloween season. So we're just sort of building on that existing audience and trying to amplify it. And then year in year out, we can continue to hone and refine it to benefit Berkeley as much as possible. Halloween is extremely popular holiday in Michigan and southeast Michigan, and so there's a real lane there. And I have to tell you, just speaking candidly, many downtowns have tried different things over the generations in terms of taking a bite at the Halloween apple. But the fact that you have such a very long footprint for your downtown, and you have so many independent merchants that are receptive, is what's really allowing this to gain that traction and momentum so quickly. If that wasn't there, we could still doll it up, we could still have fun. But the fact that you have so many successful elements of your downtown is what we're building on it and taking to the next level.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mike, for being with us and for your energy and giving us a little bit of a taste of what Buckley is going to look like this October. I know many folks are very, very excited, especially, as you mentioned, some of the younger ones who really get geared up for Halloween, and then they come home, and we have to deal with them after that, but that's okay. It's very well worth it for that, that day and these two days now. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M. 5121 with the caveats that we mentioned today and the expectations moving forward?
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number six on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R. 3021, matter of considering a resolution for participation in the 2021 Oakland County Street Tree Enhancement Match Grant Program, Oakstem.
Is there a motion to approve R. 3021?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion approved by Councilmember Henan with support from Councilmember Gavin. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Included in your application, or included in your packet this evening is a, is a well-drafted memo from Derek Schuler that explains sort of how this program came about, what the potential benefits of the community is, not only monetarily, but also the driving force behind the creation of this program, which is in large part is maintaining the city's urban canopy as well as stormwater, good stormwater practices, so both of which are very pertinent topics in the city. And I commend Derek for pursuing this and getting us to this point this evening. And he's here to present the balance of the items.
Mr. Schuler?
Thank you and good evening. So this is the first year of the 2021 Oakstem. Hopefully, it's a program that will be offered by Oakland County for several straight years. We'll see how it pans out. But essentially, this is made available to the communities in the GWK Drainage District. So we are one of those communities, and this is the county's way of trying to find creative ways to deal with stormwater management, which is right-of-way trees have a place in that. And so they are offering a one-to-one matching grant, which is what this is for. So this resolution is required for us to move forward with that grant. Couple of notes I want to bring up. In my memo, I noted the fall tree planting program and combining this with that. I think more likely, this is going to be probably its own spring planting based on the timing and numbers. Again, we're looking to use this grant to expand what we've already expanded as far as tree planting goes. So it's probably going to be a spring planting. We don't have locations or anything like that yet, but obviously, as you know, residents can contact us and fill out a form to be on the tree list. We're pretty well packed. I believe we have upwards of 400 requests for a yearly program that allocates around 200 trees. So for the next couple of years, we're in pretty good shape, but there's no lack of candidates. So more than likely, this will probably be part of that spring program. I'll get into the weeds a little bit with the order just to see if we can do a fall planting, but more likely, it'll probably be a spring planting. And you can see the grant amount, which is $13,155. Again, it's a one-to-one grant, but that's a pretty hefty amount as far as tree grants go. So we're looking forward to this grant and planting some more trees within the next year.
Thank you. Questions for our director? Councilmember Henan?
More just a couple of comments. You know, I'm really thrilled to see this come to fruition, and just want to thank our regional partners at the county for providing this opportunity to help with stormwater mitigation. But also want to thank you, Director Schuler, and Tree Board member Tricia Losi, who were instrumental in working to secure this for us. This grant's going to bring in, roughly speaking, about 80 trees, and compared, add that to the earlier grant we secured, and, you know, in the additional funding we did in previous years, we were planting around 100 trees, and this season, we will plant around 300. So a significant increase that I'm really happy to see. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Additional questions or comments? Councilmember Price?
Yes, thank you. And following up on that, I do want to thank DPW, the Tree Board, and the Beautification Advisory Committee for promoting the tree planting program and expanding it and the waitlist, so that we have those residents who are interested in having trees in the right-of-way, the easement, all lined up and that information gathered. So, thank you.
Thank you. And this is specifically for street trees, so that is very well defined in the grant, just to clarify that. So this, these trees do need to be planted in the public right-of-way.
Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm not actually stumped by this, but I'll go out on a limb and ask, you know, to not leave anything out there.
Dangerously close to losing your privilege.
I know. I think that's my third strike. If somebody hasn't had the opportunity to learn more about the program or get on that waiting list, is there any resources that they could, they could tap into to?
Sure, all of that information is on our website. So if you go under Forestry, under Public Works, you're going to see quite a bit of information on the forestry program, including the forums and some information on the yearly program. So I'd encourage everyone to take a look at that site.
Excellent. Thank you. I believe Mr. Schuler did start it when he sat into the weeds with this a little bit more.
I was going to say, he's getting into the roots.
I thought he was going into that direction.
To the roots of it was what I was thinking.
All right. Seeing no further additional comments. Thank you, Mr. Schuler, and I'm sure you're going to just stand right there and not go too far. But Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R. 3021?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number seven on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M. 5221, matter of approving the purchase of a 2022 tandem axle dump truck with bodies at a cost of $255,142 from Wolverine Freightliner and Truck and Trailer Specialties, Inc., utilizing the Mitten Cooperative Bid Contract.
Is there a motion to approve M. 5221?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion approved by Councilmember Blanchard with support from Councilmember Price. Mr. Baumgarten, do you want to start, or should we send it right over to Mr. Schuler?
Mr. Schuler would do a fantastic job.
All right. But, Mr. Schuler, before you begin, Mr. Hill, if you can hear me, I know I have not asked for virtual comments because I feel like our system may not be functioning properly. So if it is, please let me know with a yes. It does not appear there's going to be a thumbs up. If not, we will continue proceeding as we have been.
We are still functioning without video capabilities. We do not have any color camera.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Mr. Schuler?
Good evening. So this is our fourth and likely final tandem hook truck. So this is number four. We've been purchasing these now for a few years. They take some time to manufacture, so it's kind of a big day to finally reach the number four. And I'm happy to bring that for you, to you tonight. This doesn't have as many accessories as we've ordered in the past. You may have noticed that. And that's because we have those other accessories available to us now. So we have three of these tandem hook trucks right now that, again, they can that, again, they can use many different interchangeable bodies. That's the beauty of the hook truck idea, is we don't have to have as many chassis and vehicles to maintain. If we have these hook trucks, they can do multiple things. Primarily, these are plowing and salting equipment for us, but they're also dump trucks, and they can do a whole host of other things. So this is item number four, and it's going to replace a 2000 Chevy dump truck, as you can see in my memo, so we're looking forward to that. Just to highlight some of the things we will be buying with the chassis, you can see the swap loader hook list, the Monroe underbody scraper, a wing plow, and then an anti-ice tank as well. So those are the items that we're going to purchase with the vehicle. Before, if you look back on the other trucks that we purchased, we had several different bodies that we needed, and we just don't, at this time, we don't feel like we need anymore. So even though we're coming in well under our budget, I think that's the right place to be. So we're very much looking forward to this vehicle to kind of complete the tandems in our fleet. They're beautiful. All of us have seen these trucks around, and we're very proud of them. And this will be the last of those tandems, at least for the foreseeable future. So unfortunately, they take a long time to manufacture, and that has only increased. These used to take a year, and now I'm guessing this is probably going to take upwards of a year and a half to get this vehicle complete. Certainly, we're crossing our fingers for shorter, but it's going to take a long time to get these. That's just based on the state that we're in. But anyway, I'm happy to answer questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Schuler. Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just some comments. Your team is doing an excellent job of specing these vehicles. They've gotten very good at it, and I've run through all the specs. I just want to let people know that one of the good things we have is both the engine and the transmission warranty on these trucks is five years. The engine's 100,000 miles, the transmission is unlimited mileage on these trucks. So we're getting a good deal on the warranty. I had one earlier question about the DEF tank, but these calculations found out I think that'll be sufficient. But other than that, your guys are doing a great job of specing, working with Wolverine, and everything looks really good. So I'm proud of what you're doing.
Thank you. And Chong Young is very much involved in these items, so I definitely appreciate his help in putting these specs together and getting us to where we are today. So, thank you, Sean.
If those are the only comments and questions from Councilmember Blanchard, then yes, Sean should feel very good about the job that he has done in continuing to spec these out, and, you know, obviously, getting the warranties and everything that are going to make this as beneficial to us and as efficient as possible. Additional questions? Councilmember Henon?
I suspect with this being our fourth vehicle, that the answer's going to be no, but is there going to be any training needed or provided?
You know, we're pretty well-trained with the hooks, so I think we're really all set. And I want to point out, too, that we have, thanks to council, we have purchased two smaller Ford F-550s that also have hook truck capabilities. So we will have six of these units, which is pretty cool. So this is exciting. We've reached the point where we have all the hooks we need, and we're very proud of our fleet.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Mr. Hill, are there any comments virtually?
There are not.
Okay, thank you. And with no additional questions here, thank you, Mr. Schuler, for being with us, and please pass that along to Sean as well, for doing a wonderful job bringing this as well. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M. 5221?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. We now move on to item number eight, please.
Ordinance number O. 721, matter of considering a first reading of an ordinance to amend Section 138-192 projections in order to provide clarity on permitted projections into setback area on residential properties.
Is there a motion to approve O. 0721?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Gavin with support by Councilmember Henon. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize. Ms. Luto is not able to be here with you this evening. She is feeling a little bit under the weather. So, again, I apologize, because you're about to see me muddle through this. This item does come to you by way of the normal means. Planning Commission has held its public hearing, has done all the fact-finding, has made the required recommendations to this body. They recommend approval of this item. As outlined in the memo authored by Ms. Luto, there was some ambiguity left after the last time that we went through and updated this particular section of the ordinance. We don't like ambiguity in any of our ordinances, because that creates more work for bodies like our zoning board of appeals. And so in this case, Planning Commission stepped up and infilled that text of that item to clarify that 30% of a wall surface is really our threshold for these projections. So as outlined in the memo below, that would be anything like a wall surface, cantilevers, fireplaces, those are some of the examples that were discussed throughout this process previously. So this is how this comes to you. Kudos to the Planning Commission. We tend to prefer when our ordinances are living documents that are updated and reexamined on periodic occasions. So instead of letting this one age, despite these questions, they stepped up and made this recommendation to you this evening. So, Mike, I'd like to commend the Planning Commission, as well as the building official and the community development director on that.
Excellent. Thank you. Questions for Mr. Baumgarten and Director Schuto's absence? And I did speak with her today, and she does need to not be speaking right now. Wow, look at that. I mean, you take a deep breath. That one, we got through there. We got a couple more, a couple more things that we need to get through. But no, the Planning Commission, as you mentioned, did a tremendous job in taking this up and making the necessary changes that we see before us, and continuing the great work that they do in our community. And without any further ado, oh, Mr. Hill, are there any comments, please, virtually?
We do not have any virtual attendance currently.
We have no virtual attendance at all? So you're telling me that they are probably not going to comment? Okay, I got it. Thank you.
I will not comment on that.
All right. Well, how about this? Mr. Hill, at this point, if somebody does come in, please just give me a heads up, otherwise I will continue moving through as normal.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on O. 0721?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. We now move on to item number nine, please, Ms. Mitchell.
Ordinance number O. 821, matter of considering a first reading of an ordinance to amend Section 138-32 definitions and Section 138-417, principal permitted uses in relation to expanding the permitted uses to permit entertainment establishments in the downtown district and adding a definition of entertainment establishments.
Is there a motion to approve O. 0821?
So moved, Your Honor. Report.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This one comes to you by the same method as the previous one. Planning Commission has done their due diligence, held public hearings, and performed fact-finding, and made a recommendation to this body to approve the update that you'll see in your packet. The intent here is to have yet another great option for entertainment in our downtown areas. This one would include entertainment districts that are intended to be, group projects, fund items like that. We were fortunate to have Pinterest in our community, and that sort of spurred some conversation and questioning about how we have more fantastic opportunities like that, where a group of friends could come together and have a night out, whether it's through painting, cooking classes, any other sort of group activity that then they would maybe shop at our stores, dine at our restaurants, just make it for a fantastic night out in Berkeley. Planning Commission felt that was a more than appropriate use. It should be a principally permitted use within our downtown district as well. So that is the little bit of backstory and how it comes to you this evening with the recommendation of approval.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Baumgarten? Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you. I'd just like to clarify for those that don't understand this, because we've got some in the city now. This is in the downtown district. And for those that don't know, that's 12 Mile from Tyler to Kipling on both sides, and 12 Mile, the block Henley and Mortenson on the south side of 12 Mile. So those are the areas we're talking about. People get confused because they got anticipate, they got Pinterest, they got some other similar things now. But this, well, this is a law right in the middle of our downtown district. Just a clarification for those that didn't understand.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. Kind of building on that, just again, for those that may not have watched the Planning Commission's thoughtful discussions on this, or had a chance to review this, I'll just briefly help share what the definition of entertainment establishments are. It was already highlighted quite well by the city manager. It's any indoor establishment where entertainment is provided as an experience of enjoyment of the patrons. Such uses may include, but not limited to, art, photography, music, craft, ceramic, glass, or cooking studios for the purposes of hosting classes, providing live-action entertainment, or conducting group or independent activities. Such uses may be in conjunction with another use if deemed compatible by the zoning officer. So it's exciting to have a formal mechanism in place to seek out and encourage these kinds of experiences for residents and visitors, and then, as mentioned, to continue to attract folks to our vibrant downtown. So I'm very pleased to see this come to us tonight.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments? All right, seeing none. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on O. 0821?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Item, yes, now please move on to item number 10, Ms. Mitchell.
Motion number M. 5321, matter of authorizing the city manager to sign the application for corrective action plan, CAP, for the City of Berkeley General Employees Defined Benefit Pension Plan. The signed CAP will be forwarded to the Michigan Department of Treasury Municipal Stability Board for review and decision on approval.
Is there a motion to approve M. 5321?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Gavin with support from Mayor Protam Dean. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've come to the part of the evening where I apologize that the finance director was not able to be with us this evening. See, starting back, if you're familiar with our discussions, those that follow council and this body as well, should be familiar with now by PA 202 of 2017, which was an act of the state legislature in order to put a greater amount of emphasis on a community's post-employment benefits as well as pension funding levels. This was a sea change at the state level, as far as their oversight of municipalities go. We initially did not have any issues with our MERS funding levels when the legislature began this process, but we did end up moving through a process like this, where we had a corrective action plan for our other post-employment benefits, which is, or referred to as OPAB, which for us is largely just our retiree healthcare funding levels. We have since been able to thankfully climb out of that corrective action plan status. We are on a good course there, and we would like to follow suit with our MERS retirement system as well. So the finance director has been working on putting together a couple of viable options to get us to a 60% funding level in just seven short years from now. So by 2028, we should be at that threshold, which is one of the ones that the state holds up as being an important level for municipalities all across the state to maintain. So we are only, we're only at about 51% now, so we are very, just shy of it from a percentage standpoint, which is why it's, you see such a short duration here as opposed to like our OPAB plan, which was definitely a multi-year plan for there. So we're happy that we're not far from it. We're happy that the treasury is so willing to work with us on getting to that important threshold. Obviously, our goal is, and has been, and remains to be, reaching a 100% funded level, and we will continue to pursue that even after reaching the 60% threshold that the state cares about, because fully funding that obligation is important to the city of Berkeley. In the packet, the finance director goes through a number of different items that we would be endeavoring upon to reach not only 60% funding, but eventually 100% funding. There are tactile actions that the city is able to take. Some of them are just following through with what we've already been doing, but some of them will also be altering benefit levels for new hires coming in, modernizing that benefit, bringing us in line with some of our other surrounding municipalities as well. And so while still maintaining, very importantly, while still maintaining the promises that we've made to our existing employees, which we hold that as being incredibly important, and will always do so. So I applaud the finance director. This is not easy to put together something like this. This is not easy to make these projections. It does involve working with MERS, and then, as you see in the packet, the outside entity GRS, which is a third party that we depend on as well to run these actuarial calculations. So that is a long history and background of how we got to this point, but it's not a bad point to be in. As I said, we've been through this now with another part of our offering. We know that there's a light at the end of the tunnel, and we know how important this process is, and we know how fair treasury has been in working with municipalities all across the state. So that is why we recommend, administration recommends approval of the corrective action plan that you have this evening.
Additional comments for our city manager on M. 5321? Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to state that for everybody's reference, that we have been paying our required commitment to this, plus we've been paying additional money to this, and because of situations and actuarial things, we have not been able to climb up far enough. So I want everybody, the city and the city manager, the finance director, have been working very hard on this, and it's just one of those things we have to monitor every year to make sure that we're doing it correctly, to make sure we keep in line with the funding projections. And they're doing a great job. If anybody wants a better explanation on this, and they've got two or three months, they can come and ask me, because it's very complicated.
Well, and that's a good point, Councilmember Blanchard, and I'm sure folks who have attended our budget hearings and even as we pass our annual budgets, that certainly honoring those promises that we have made is incredibly important to this council, previous council, certainly administration as well, and we will continue to make sure that we are doing that. And this just makes sure that the state agrees that we are doing that. Councilmember Henon?
Yeah, and I had similar comments. Since my time on council, I've seen no risk of us ever not being able to pay our obligations. And since I inherited that, that means the councils before me were doing their job as well. So there has always been a clear and realistic plan to make sure that we got to a fully funded status, and I've not seen any risk in, you know, that we would not be able to pay, fully pay our obligations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no additional questions or comments, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M. 5321?
Henon?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Before we move on to item number 11, I do apologize to those of you that are in the bubble, as I was planning on being as well, but unfortunately, there were some notifications that did not quite get turned off. The game is certainly underway, and it is my understanding that the Lions did something positive. I'm not entirely sure what that means, but they have not lost yet.
We've got 15 minutes for the meeting, so they should lose by then.
Well, I don't think it's too far. We're still in the first quarter, I believe. But Ms. Mitchell, would you please call item number 11?
Motion number M. 5421, matter of authorizing the amendment of the 2021-2022 budget as presented.
Is there a motion to approve M. 5421?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Price. And just to finish that thought, the only reason I was saying that was for our folks that are watching us instead of the football game right now. I did not want them to miss anything. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is one of our quarterly budget updates. Obviously, we do this four times a year, so we have hit that point in the calendar in which we present those items that deviated from the original intended budget. So what you see is a memo in your packet from finance director noting the subsequent changes in the fund balance. You'll note that we are still well within the city's adopted fund balance policy, even though we are, have though we are, have a planned spending decrease of those funds for those who have tuned in here instead of the Lions game. The fund balance is monies that we will save over the course of multiple years with projects in mind. Then we utilize those funds towards that project, and that is the way that the city maintains a high level of investments in everything from dump trucks, as you saw this evening, to roads, to our, to the city's infrastructure as well, and also the wonderful public servants that make all these things possible here. So, all the above go into the budget annually, and from time to time, we do have to change those from our projections that we started at, at the beginning of the fiscal year. So, you'll see in your packet as well, for those that are interested, and exactly what is being changed here, the Finance Director has itemized it dollar sign by dollar sign, and noted where we started, where we intend to move to, and has been able to note in some situations here where text permits the reasoning why, whether it's a carry forward from a previous year, or perhaps something came in higher or lower than expected. So, all of that is included in the packets. Again, along with a memo explaining the overall outcomes as promised by the adoption of the fund balance policy for the general fund. So, hopefully, it's a complete package for council this evening.
Excellent, and thank you, and thank you for giving a little context on our fund balance and where we would like to be as it relates to our fund balance policy, certainly above 20. This, we're about 25.65 right now. We want to stay between 25 and 35, so we are within the policy that we adopted last year. Additional questions or comments for Mr. Baumgartner? Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Baumgartner, for filling in so ably for Director Pollak and Director Schluto. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M5421?
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
We now move over to communications. Ms. Mitchell, who is up first?
Councilmember Baker.
Councilmember Baker, and I certainly will just remind everybody, in case they weren't aware, there is a football game that is going on this evening. Okay. Councilmember Baker, would you please begin?
Well, thank you, Your Honor. I'm glad to kick this off here, and hopefully, I won't get this too far into the red zone without even, you know, passing it on to one of my colleagues. I think the door was open for me on that one, actually. The Downtown Development Authority Board met a few weeks ago on Wednesday, September 8th, and as was so delightfully presented by our DDA Director, Mr. McGinnis, you know, several key activities and events are happening throughout the month of Berkeley. I won't reiterate the entire list, but please go to downtownberkeley.com to learn more about all of the fantastic things that are happening in our great city here. Historical Committee met last Monday, September 13th, and as we've seen, they've been very busy with delightful publications such as The Museum Corner. If anyone was tuned in late, these, this delightful newsletter is available in print and in electronic form, and continues to highlight, you know, the many great things that are going on in our city's history, and positioning us well for great future things to come. The committee still is not yet able to accept credit cards. I know it's been many months now, actually several years, as we've looking to do that. You know, the committee did have a strong presence at the Cruz Fest and at the Art Bash, but yet again, had to turn away folks who go cashless these days. So, I certainly encourage anything we can do to help them out. The Technology Committee next meets on Wednesday, October 20th, and they're very happy to report that our current website is now secure after many months of conversation about that, and I know that the upcoming, you know, website and machinery will be inherently secure, which is great. Still no news yet on the Alexa app. It's only been a couple of years now, so maybe it's not quite ready to get rolled out, but the committee thinks it is. And recently, I've spoken about topics in my closing thoughts that have been quite serious, talking about COVID vaccinations and masking, voter integrity and secure elections, insurrections and racial profiling, and more. And today, I'd like to turn to a slightly lighter topic and quote the comic icon Stan Lee, who said, "Comic books to me are fairy tales for grownups." Now, I am a fan of like the superhero movie kind of genre, and many of them have been very well done over the past few years. And one of the latest, one of the most recent films is yet another creation of a Berkeley High School alumni, Jim Starlin from the class of 1967. Some of you may remember him. He created the character Shang Shi, who is the leading character in the latest Marvel movie. I remember growing up with those comics in the late 70s and early 80s, and Mr. Starlin also created Thanos, if you know those movies, you know who that guy is, Gamora, Drax, and the Infinity Gauntlet, among many other innovations that he added into the comic book universe. He authored an autobiography in 2011 that chronicles his tenure with both Marvel and DC Comics. And Mr. Starlin is scheduled to appear at the upcoming Motor City Comic Con, scheduled for October 15th to 17th in Novi. And so, I'd just like to give kudos to him and all who have created those iconic characters that, and vast adventures for all of us to enjoy. And for me, a key takeaway from his story is to follow your dreams and to confidently and positively express yourself. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, and the movie that he certainly played a role in getting off the ground and inspiring, it's been number one, three straight weeks at the box office.
I tell ya, he's...
Continuing to do very well.
He was onto something there with that guy, yeah.
Thank you.
Super.
Councilmember Price?
Touchdown.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Turbrack. This morning, we all woke up to the great news that a COVID-19 vaccine for elementary-age, school-aged kids works, and that the process of its FDA approval can now begin. I eagerly anticipate my kids being vaccinated and the protection that this safe and effective vaccine will offer for my entire family. In the meantime, I am incredibly grateful for the precautions offered in Berkeley schools, in our city departments, and in our entire community. I'm also grateful for the creative efforts of staff and volunteers to think about and imagine these safe and fun events for our kids to enjoy outside. We heard tonight about Buchley at length. I'm sure we'll hear about Parks and Rec activities that are coming up that will be outside. And in addition to those, I wanted to let everyone know that the Berkeley Public Library will be hosting in-person Storytimes under the pavilion at J.C. Park throughout the month of October. You can visit the library's website for details. The library also continues to host Zoom Book Club meetings and presentations, including one on electric cars that's coming up on October 28th at 7:00 PM. You can register for those on the website or by giving the library a call. The library's hours for in-person services have now returned to pre-pandemic schedule, Monday through Thursday from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Friday from 10:00 to 6:00, and Saturday from 10:00 to 3:00 PM. And thank you very much to Director Church and the staff at the library, and in all of our departments for providing Berkeley residents with the excellent service that we've come to expect, while adapting to necessary restrictions and precautions to keep everyone safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a quick one. Lids for Kids at Public Safety Open House is this Saturday, September 25th, 10:00 to 2:00 at Berkeley Public Safety. And for the kids, we have obtained some copies of Prepare with Pedro, Disaster Preparedness Activities book, which will be available, and a Ready to Help book and game card thing, which we've got 50 of each of these donated by FEMA, and if we find that they're very popular, we will order some more of them. So, that's this Saturday, 10:00 to 2:00 at Public Safety. And my quote for city management is, "Remember, when disaster strikes, the time to prepare has passed." Stephen Cyrus.
Excellent. Thank you, and thank you for the reminder of Flyers Safety Open House and Lids for Kids that is happening, especially since Lids for Kids in particular wasn't able to go this year, or the past year. So, excited that our Public Safety officers have been able to combine them this year. Mayor Protam?
Thank you. October is National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and the City of Southfield is having a walk to raise awareness for, of domestic violence. That will take place on Sunday, October 3rd, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. It will be held at the Southfield Municipal Campus. Everyone is welcome. You can see the graphics on the screen, but please register if you're going to be there. I have so many Parks and Rec activities. Councilmember Price, you were, yeah, you were all over that. Parks and Pumpkins is Thursday, October 7th, at Community Park from 3:30 to 5:00 PM. You'll enjoy cider, donuts, and pumpkin decorating. There is no charge for this event, but please, please register by October 1st. How do you register? The Parks and Recreation Department has gone to a new platform, so it's recreation.berkleymish.org. Everyone's favorite Tale on the Trail is Thursday, October 21st. There are multiple time slots beginning at 6:00 PM. Space is limited, and preregistration is required. Please bring a bag for candy, which has been generously donated by the Friends of Berkeley Parks and Recreation, and costumes are encouraged. Boo Fest, another fan favorite, is Monday, October 25th. You'll enjoy pumpkin decorating, a spider maze, trunk or treating, and more. Costumes are encouraged, as is a bag for candy. Boo Fest runs from 4:30 to 6:30 PM. Registration for that begins on September 27th, and signups are limited to eight children per five-minute time slot. The M Parks Foundation is hosting a virtual 5K, that's 3.1 miles, in the month of September to raise funds for local recreation and park opportunities. You may run, walk, skateboard, stand-up paddleboard, bike, surf, or swim a 5K anytime during the month of September, so lots of options. The best part is that half of the registration fees are sent back to our community. I'm registered, and it's not too late for you to sign up as well. I will be biking on my Peloton, lots of 5Ks in the month of September. There are many senior activities and adult and youth programs also going on at Parks and Recreation, so please continue to check the city's website or the Parks and Recreation Facebook page for more information. Go Lions.
Thank you. Councilmember Henan?
Thank you. The ZBA's last meeting was in August. They approved an addition to a home after the property owner scaled back on his request. There were no ZBA cases to hear in September, and there are none for October. The Tree Board, as we discussed earlier tonight, they were thrilled to learn of the second grant award that they got this year, or helped the city get this year. They also discussed their communications plan for sharing information about tree care and educating people on how to protect city trees. They looked at tracking tribute trees. Those are trees that have been donated to the city, and they reviewed their mission and vision statements for the future. Their next scheduled meeting is Monday, November 8th. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Planning Commission met last month, and we saw much of what was discussed. Next meeting will be September 28th at 7:00 PM, and then the Environmental Advisory Committee met and discussed where green infrastructure efforts are at, and what a sustainability and green infrastructure plan might look like for the city, and how we can get kind of that process, you know, more fully vetted out and started. So, the next meeting is November 18th at 6:30, and that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Berkeley Plaza construction is in full swing, so those have probably noticed it along Coolidge there as it takes shape. That is a partnership between the DDA, the school district, and the city. We're very excited about seeing the finished product on that. Should be a couple more weeks, but a fantastic addition to the public amenities along Coolidge. Again, thanking the school district, who not only provided the land for that, but has also served as project lead in dealing with the contractor. So, not only is Mr. Scott Francis superintendent, it's been phenomenal, but Larry Gallagher has really spearheaded this, and it's been greatly appreciated by all of the partners involved here. There are three days left. September 23rd is the last day to put your last, or your thoughts in on the master plan as we are out for the 63-day communication period. So, that is found the library, Public Works, City Hall, and the Recreation Department. So, basically, anywhere where you can do business with the city, there should be a box available there with not only the plan, but also a comment card. So, I know there's gonna be a big rush, so try to socially distance as you line up behind those boxes to put those cards in there. Last but not least, DTE's been in the news a lot lately. They are enhancing their tree trimming program. They've been very transparent as of, about the troubles that they have faced with the insanity that has been the weather this particular summer. This morning, their CEO, their head of the electric company, Electric Division, as well as their director of the tree trimmings, all were on a Zoom call with county leaders and different various municipalities as well. It was a very informative conversation. Again, DTE is, they're working to do everything they can to mitigate as many outages as possible, and a big part of that plan is aggressive tree trimming, which the City of Berkeley is going to benefit from as well. As you probably recall, DTE came through and very aggressively trimmed some of our more troublesome areas a couple of years ago. We did see a pretty significant decrease in the instances of outages past that point, so we know this is something that works, and we know that it's something that is going to help our residents keep their power on during these intense storms that we've had of late. So, kudos to them, and thank you to the county for pulling together that conversation. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Mitchell, I know we're getting closer to election season. Do you have anything this time, or you're gonna save it for October?
I would like to add, if you don't mind, that absentee ballots for the November 2nd, 2021 general election will begin being mailed out this Thursday. They'll be available to the public as well. Anyone that would like to receive an absentee ballot can call us 248-658-3310, or send an email to clerk@berkleymish.net. All updates and any other election-related services can be found by visiting berkeleymish.org/vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one item to report on. Manager Baumgartner and I just completed this afternoon, just a few hours ago, four somewhat grueling days of marijuana business licensing appeals, four half-days, to be, I guess, more precise. There was a lot of work and preparation involved, and I think for the most part, the appeals were very well presented by the applicants, a lot of good points, presentations made, and we look forward to Hearing Officer Needs' report and recommendation, which he expects to have toward the end of the month. So, after this very long process, since the council was involved in adopting the ordinance, it looks like the decision time will be coming your way very soon, hopefully next month, where we'll be in a position to review Mr. Needs' report and start making licensing decisions and get underway with having retail marijuana businesses established in Berkeley.
Excellent. Thank you. Just a couple of quick things, but I do want to apologize to all the residents that have been watching with us virtually for the technical difficulties. We'll certainly get those taken care of. It does appear that it is Councilmember Henan's turn to be frozen on the screen, maybe not quite as flattering as he would have liked, but we will, we will work that out. The first two ended up, went very well, so we'll figure out what the issue was. Outside of that, just a couple of quick things, as my colleagues have done a tremendous job making sure that we're aware of all the great things happening in our community. The city manager and I met with Congressman Levin and his team and our peers in the region a couple of weeks ago to discuss hot-button topics. Not surprisingly, one of the biggest items that we advocated for and are seeking support and leadership dealt with the same regional conversation that I mentioned earlier with Senator Mallory McMorro's team and with Liz Trombley. Having... Senator Mallory McMorro's team and with Liz Trombley, having an actual discussion on infrastructure and what we can do together as a region to curb what is going to, what has become much more of a consistent concern, and moving forward, that's probably not going to change. So we need to, we need to do something, and this is technically not a federal item, I understand that, but any support and influence that the congressman has to help get those discussions a little bit more in earnest would certainly be appreciated on our end, and my colleagues certainly echoed that, my colleagues in neighboring municipalities. The other issue certainly was COVID and concern over the looming rise in cases this winter, and talking about how our municipalities are certainly handling it. We heard today how we are handling it and taking a precautious approach to keep everybody safe, but also to keep the business of our community moving, and we are going to continue doing that. And we respectfully request that everybody else do everything that they can to out and about to stay safe. I know we are having more events outside, which is great. There are also some events periodically indoors, so please, please be safe. And finally, I would like to congratulate our Parks and Rec Director, Ms. Teresa McCarleton. She's been inducted, or will be inducted, in just a few short weeks into the Albion-Britain Hall of Fame, Class of 2021. That will happen as part of their homecoming festivities on October 22nd. Teresa was a three-time MIAA soccer player, as well as helping the Brits to three consecutive MIAA titles. She also explicitly threatened me if I said that, so if I am not at the next meeting, I think we all know where to go for that. And with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Protem with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Are there any, there is no discussion? Good. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hennan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. The September 20th, 2021 meeting of the 38th Council of the City of Berkeley is adjourned.